Okay, we're recording.
Okay. Good morning, welcome to everyone to the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen today Tuesday, February sixth at eight thirty a.m. This is a hybrid meeting. In front of you, you have today's agenda, if I could get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Steve, Amy, it's unanimous. And the minutes, we have two sets of minutes to approve, so let me go first with the approval of the minutes for the special meeting held on January twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Could I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Okay. It's unanimous. And then the regular meeting held January thirtieth. Motion to approve those meetings, Steve, Amy unanimous. Public comments, members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics scheduled for review or vote. Comments submitted electronically should be sent to the following email address, B O S distribution at newcanonct.gov. If anyone wishing to make any comments.
No one on, no one online.
Okay. All right, moving on to sidewalk cafe guidelines. Sarah, Carrie, nice to see you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm before you today to request some updates to our sidewalk cafe guidelines as it comes to the guidelines themselves and how we charge fees. So just some very brief background, the sidewalk cafe guidelines were adopted in two thousand nine and they are adopted by the Board of Selectmen, the planning zoning department manages them, we issue the permits, we enforce the guidelines. And they haven't really been updated since two thousand eleven and you know, I think culturally a lot has changed since two thousand eleven as pertains to outdoor dining. And so there are just a few things that we should clean up based on how we've been operating outdoor dining for the last few years. So first, I'm proposing a minor regulation change because right now you can't encroach on the sidewalks more than seven feet and all of the brick bump outs that have been done by the town over the last couple of years. Restaurants that utilize those bump outs are violating that and I assume we don't want that to happen, so I'm proposing that and then looking to increase the fees. It was currently a three hundred dollar flat fee regardless of how many seats you had, which I don't think that's necessarily how we should operate anymore if we are allowing people to bump out more than seven feet under the sidewalk. So I have proposed a sliding scale, happy to go into everything in further detail, but don't know if you'll have questions for me.
I was just going to mention that it's noted in your, in your memo, but we are maintaining the four foot ADA compliance, so there's no encroaching on walkers, any further encroachment on walkers. It's just the ability to add the seven, you know, go beyond seven feet if you have the extra space. Sarah, correction, but we, we had those partitions that went into the street to give people more seating space, right? Is that going to continue?
I think that's up to the police commission to just retire.
Which means we're taking, you know.
Fire has an update.
Okay.
Yeah. Morning. So Sarah's correct, we've been asking the police commission for approval to bump out into the street in several locations down on the to the north side of Allen Street. Excuse me. On, we have replaced the white plastic precast barriers with a concrete barrier that has a planter planting a capability to plant inside it. It's basically a large planter, a large concrete planter of the same size and height as a precast concrete barrier, a smaller one.
And, and something that's stronger is required from a safety perspective?
Yeah, we can't just put a cone because we'd be asking, you know, that the we're, we're the resident at that point in time where the diner is in the street at the same level. So the car could just go through the barrier and strike a diner. Whereas on the bump outside, we've got a granite curb and then a sidewalk, so there is a slight barrier from, from an air vehicle. But at present, we'll go back to the police commission for approval for this year's expansion of that area for several of the, of the restaurants and utilize these concrete barriers instead of the, the plastic.
And when they, well, if we do that, so basically functionally giving them sidewalk kind of sort of space to, to put the cafe, which I mean, we all like it, it's great. Will they be charged a fee for that space as well to be equitable with the other restaurants?
Thinking as if you charge based on the number of seats, they're still paying for it in a way.
So that will apply to them, even though it's not the sidewalk, it's into the road, but it'll apply. Okay. As opposed to how Greenwich does it, they do it if you go out into the street, there's a flat fee. So this is based on number of tables, which probably is a number of seats, sorry. So this is probably, you know, a good, they don't, they don't look at number of seats, so you could really pack them in and, and you know, although there's probably health department guidelines that impact that too, but okay.
What's, what are the, what are the future plans as we go through, once we get to playhouse up? What, what should the public expect that to look like, you know, come July one? Along Elm Street there, what's the? So the, so the theater will be, they'll have outdoor dining as well.
Well, the area in front of the theater will be, it will continue that curve past the crosswalk twenty five feet, okay, so it'll, it'll end somewhere between the theater and Soleil. The next, the next building right there or it might be Black, whatever, Blackbird, sorry. That's where the bump out at present will end. We're looking to do a bump outs on the southern side in front of the mid block crosswalk, both sides of that, and then it's south. Here, and the contract hasn't been approved here, the material purchase was, and the commission approved that work. We just need to bid that, come back to you for that work and that would be on the southern side, so the three, the three, the two cross or three crosswalks there will get bump outs in each one. And then should the commission want to see the barricades, then we'll put the, we'll put the planters on as we mentioned. And that's that at present won't complete it, but that's what we're planning for this year. And then we are studying whether or not to continue that, that process of bumping outside of the northern side of the street further and what the ramifications would be at that point in time for loss of parking.
So you're talking about permanent bumping out, like, do you have a schematic of what, I mean, at some point, just I'm having trouble following visually on that.
We can, I'll send that back out to you guys since, yes, it's your board, we can send that out to show you exactly what we're proposing.
Some of the prior discussion maybe was the, the, it seems as though we would be losing a lot of parking, but in reality, because of the, the reconfiguring of a lot of
Get more.
We, well, I think we're down one, maybe if we do.
No, it'll be a net, zero. Yeah, we lost five with the, with the northern side, we put the southern side on, we gained five back. So it's a net, it's a net of zero, which is, which is, which is a win. But we lost those five during COVID because we started that process, you know, this bump out to the restaurants during COVID. So it's really been since probably twenty twenty that we've been down five.
It, I'm sorry, do you, do you have a, we purchased the barriers, the, we have a picture of that at some point, just visual helps.
Yeah. I'll do whatever we sent to the previous board will send to you so you can understand exactly what we're looking at or, you know, what the proposal was.
Those were a lot like, I think the elm had them out first, right?
Very similar, yeah, they're a very similar structure.
They actually plant them, you know, they.
I have a meeting with the Boat Beautification League on the fourteenth to discuss that prospect, yes.
That's a huge upgrade to those barriers, no one likes those barriers.
Yeah, they were a little rough. I, I know there was a quick response, so we get that.
Better than the concrete.
No Jersey barriers.
Step up from the concrete and this will be a step up from there.
Use them for other things too, I mean, they've been helpful for anything, garbage and stuff like that, connecting water out, move around.
Yeah, the purchase of the, of the, of the plastic barricades was actually a good thing for us because it's a good point. For other, yeah, for other events, we've been able to use them, which is a nice thing.
Getting back to the timeline, any idea, you know, if we, we're talking about all this work on that main drag, when, I mean, are we going to be finished by high season or?
Like to do the, I'd like to do the bump out work during the summer. And then we're looking to try to pave that during the summer and then reinstall the brick crosswalks, you know, because now they're, they're covered with asphalt. Back in two thousand and four, two thousand and five, they've, they've seen better life and they've been cut now a couple of times with, with various work going through. So the idea, it was, it was our idea to do it last year, we just had to wait for the utilities to get out of the way and they're still in the street right now, so they'll be out of the way, hopefully this summer, we'll come in, repave it, have a brand new sheet and then put in new decorative crosswalks similar to what the Y did, I'm sorry, the library. The crosswalk that's at the library, we're looking to utilize the exact same process.
It just seems like so long ago where we had everything done and perfect, you know, and, and we'd love at some point to be able to say, hey, this, we're done, it's perfect.
No one more than me. No one more than me, so.
It's making it ever so sad.
Right.
Downtown.
Very close, very close. But yeah, that, that's the goal as, as the theater rolls open to have that done and then the work behind it as well, as far as the the walkway coming to the theater from the playhouse lot in the, in the rear, all that work to, to kind of coalesce at one point.
All the residents are cheering you on Tiger to get this done, because everybody loves the way it looks when it's done. And then if everybody can visualize what it's going to look like.
Yeah, and actually, you know, sharing the visual with us, you know, everybody can see it. So those of us who are tough with that is seeing in front of us too. Because you, you get the north, south orientation, I'm like, who is he talking about?
Sorry.
No, it's.
North side is playhouse side, south side is the duck and donut side.
Yeah, but it'd be just great to see where we're bumping down and where the cars go and everything.
And one last question for Sarah on the fees, have we communicated this with the affected restaurants at all or are we? They have to get passed and then?
Yeah, and then.
Tucker, how have we done that in the past, is that, would we reach out to them and give them some feedback first or should we just?
There have been discussions, just, you know, ad hoc discussions that have taken place over the years about sort of the inequity of the amount of seating that people have had and ways to resolve that and fees is one of those. Laura, just in terms of the logistics of it, Laura obviously has a distribution list, so she would then reach out and tell everybody, we have a couple, she I always still call it week, the chamber, still has a, has a couple of events coming up. Meet the member breakfast coming up on next week or the week after, we'll get a breakfast or lunch for selectmen on the calendar. So those are also opportunities to make sure everybody's there.
Yeah, so we can make sure she, they have this proposal right now, yeah.
She just called Laura, I think she was trying to get a little bit.
Okay, good. And you know, it'll be, it probably instills some, you know, management by the restaurant and how many they put out there. You know, if, if they don't think they're going to be able to, you know, do that business, then we don't just have a bunch of tables and chairs outside that are just being unutilized and, and, you know, people will start to be more thoughtful about what goes out on the sidewalk. Which also may be a good, a good thing.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, it is so, it's amazing if you drive through there on a nice day and you see every single seat taken, you know, at lunchtime or
It's nice. And just with, which we have those nice barriers with cascading flowers. Just saying, not the plastic ones. All right, any other questions? All right, do I have a motion to approve a request from the town planner for modifications to the sidewalk cafe guidelines and proposed change to the fee schedule as follows? Number of seats, one to fifteen. Current fee, three hundred, proposed fee, four hundred, fifteen to thirty. Current fee, three hundred, proposed fee, eight hundred. Number of seats, thirty one plus, number of rest, current fee, three hundred, proposed fee, sixteen hundred. Just a point of clarification, that's for the season, right? That's not monthly?
Correct, that is for the season.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
And the season is.
Yeah, it's kind of a bargain. Compared to what they're charging in Greenwich, I'm in like.
That's six or seven months.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
Divide the largest number by, you know, it's, it's a hundred or two a month, so I don't think this is too egregious.
It, it's kind of like, it's a benefit to us as a town, it's a benefit to them, so a little expense. And I'm sorry, so in terms of doing it by seat versus square footage, you just kind of made a choice?
Shift all throughout the season.
Okay.
So it's, it's just a little complicated to carry that out.
Yeah, I just think this imposes fundamental fairness to all the restaurants.
Formal plans that are submitted.
Oh, good, so they can do what they want.
So it's just, it'd be a lot to ask of, to calculate the square footage.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? All right. So could we, could I, could I get a motion to approve the, the request that I just read? So Steve, Amy, it's unanimous, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah. All right, Albie, it really is nice, the outdoor seating, no, it's really, it's delightful, it is great. Now hopefully we'll have a
Good morning, all.
Summer to share.
All right. Fire Department has three requests today, first one is recommend an increase of our blanket P O for gallon night company. I did book up to thirty five thousand for tanker repairs, it's actually repairs on our tanker and on one of our engines that are up there.
So I just, I have a quick question, I see the purchase order is for twenty thousand, nine fifteen, do we, is there like a bunch of other things you think?
Yeah, so that was the, unfortunately, they are not the greatest on paperwork. Our second, the engine is coming in roughly at twelve thousand dollars for some of the repairs that we needed to make on that. Keep it up, keep it on the road.
Okay, so then you're really only about three thousand of wiggle room after that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, gallons is our primary, you know, repair and emergency repair place that they're mobile and they can come down. And this is all money that's in our apparatus repair budget for the year.
Any questions from anyone else on the board?
Right, cue, I guess I'm.
I know.
What's that?
Right, cue, I hear that.
Yeah, they go into a rack in white oak shade.
Okay, well, if there are no further questions, if I could get the, the approval for the fire department to increase the following previously approved purchase order, gallon and night increased to thirty five thousand dollars for necessary repairs and to perform annual service on the New Canaan Fire Department tanker. Steve, Amy, second, it's unanimous, all right, moving on.
The second one is to increase our blanket purchase order up to five thousand dollars for fire tech and safety. They handle a lot of our small repairs on SCBA, that's one reason it's, has increased. We've done a lot of work with this company and, you know, based on the finances and the, the rules of purchasing, need to increase the P O, correct? And I don't know if you want me to do this, this commission also at the same time, it's the same reason.
We have this, I don't, we have any, we don't have any detail on this, the second two.
There's not much, it's just all small, it's all small.
Oh, just all the, I'll just the, okay.
Yeah. This one is, yeah, SCBA repairs.
Yeah.
And the commission is for classes.
Yeah.
And so on, but they're all small numbers, putting us over the, the guidelines of the P Os.
So are you asking?
For one vendor.
Are you asking for this particular, this particular case, or are you asking for a permanent change to the?
We are increasing our blanket.
Yeah, for the year.
Yeah, for the year.
So they have to go in every, every, at the beginning of the year, hopefully, and put out a purchase order for what they think they're going to be buying for the year. And then this instance is an instance where they didn't realize they were going to need more than they budget, you know, that they said that they would need from their vendor.
Yeah, and a lot of these, we've done individual P Os for, but based on the rules as we're clean, you know, going through the rules because we used the one vendor, we went over the limit, so that's why we have to, even though we had our individual P Os up to this point for a lot of their repairs. Because it's over that limit, we need to get.
Kind of a little budget discipline.
Yes.
It's a budget discipline that's being instituted, so. Is, is it the fact that we get to a certain point and the bidding is required for it, is that part of the year?
Well, you look at it for the year. So if they spend normally on the air tank ones, they spend, you know, twelve thousand, but they put in four different P Os. It should be one hit, but it should be one P O that's for the same service regardless. This particular service, we buy the air tank, so we're not going to send it out or, or quote it out to someone else to fix the tanks that we bought from this company. So we keep it within that company, but for the full year, it's going to go over the threshold that you need to go in front of.
Right.
Okay. And then this is a situation where you don't just sort of willy nilly bid this out, you get the pros taking care of your equipment, right?
And normally you'll see it, May, May and June, once the budget is set, you'll see departments come in front of you with their P Os. So instead of, you know, coming in the middle of the year, they'll come up front and say, we need for the air tanks, we're going to spend approximately twelve thousand dollars. And the P O gets approved then, so they don't have to keep coming back, so they get it, look at how much they paid to that vendor and then it's done for the year. The approval.
So it should be tighter next year, right?
And, and it's been, yes.
I'm not saying it's not tight, I'm sorry. Yeah, but also, I mean, you did mention a good thing, it does institute, you know, sort of, it does put in the purchasing policy when you do want a P O for something that falls above a certain threshold, you know, instead of having smaller P Os we'll have one larger P O and that should have been, you know, and that'll get bid out at the beginning of the year. So it does, on many levels, it adds a level of budget discipline that I think is good and thank you, Anne, for, you know, doing it.
The one that everyone hates.
Process change, it's a process change and, you know, everybody has to use to, everybody's.
The biggest one is just knowing that we went over on these individual companies, which, like I said, even though we had individual P Os on each one moving in.
Right.
Now we're over the, you know, the limit for the company and that's kind of where this is right now, what we're asking for.
And you have the money. Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. I mean, it was because you're going over, so the question is, is there, right?
And it's to make it easier for just doing one P O, they can have multiple lines, so you don't have to have multiple P Os, you can have one P O and hit different accounts.
You just have to organize at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, 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 and a lot of departments do.
Yeah, we're learning with Amazon Business.
Yeah.
Yes.
So. Okay, any other questions?
That's, that's kind of ironic because the, over the years, you know, over the past, since I've been serving, I've always used, you know, when we talk about budgets and the nice to haves, I've always used the air tanks that the firemen wear as my example of you gotta do it, you know, that, and, and it's kind of ironic that this is what we're talking about in this particular case, but this is, again, budget discipline and it's a great thing, so thank you, Anne, for bringing it forward.
And I think all of us, I mean, Amy, you've said it, you know, there are going to be times when there's only one provider that you would want to use, even if there are two providers, there might be one that you would never want to use the second provider. So I think we all just have to, you know, I think you have to know that we'll be willing if you can explain why, you know, we're open to that. Why we're not going a little bitter, right, exactly, go to the right bitter, right, go to the right bitter, so, so.
The SCBA stuff was, Bolton Colton bid, but they, we went through this over a year ago and how much they were charging for their annual service and that's why we selected fire tech for the next two years for repairs and the annual testing on the app, on the breathing apparatus.
Okay. All right, so if there are no more questions, if I could get, I'll just do, do one at a time, if I could get a motion to approve fire department to increase the purchase order from fire tech and safety to five thousand dollar, wait, increase to five thousand for one vendor over the limit. Steve, Amy, it's unanimous, and then if I could get a motion to approve the increase to the approved purchase order from fire prevention and control, an increase to fifteen thousand for various training classes. Second, unanimous, thank you, Albie.
All right, thank you.
Hopefully, that call is not too.
Not too serious.
I haven't seen a note yet.
All right.
Most of them are, that's good.
We do not look like Chief Dave.
It's something else coming up this morning, so, you know, first down.
Okay.
So just here for approval to spend funds we have, so we can purchase three additional police radios to accommodate the new vehicles that are going to go to our SROs and going through Motorola's, by that I can remember, and have been working in a relationship with them, we're confident with what they gave us.
These are all the units inside the vehicles, nothing to do with portables or any of the total.
Since we're getting all kinds of radio requests lately and trying to figure out which radios are which.
Yeah, it's interesting, they call these mobile radios, but that means they go in the car.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
First thought, mine was always mobiles, the one that we have on our person, but
Okay.
That's for the car.
So when did the cars come in?
They're here, there's one that's coming, one last one, pickup trucks coming the end of this month.
Okay.
So the cars are here and we've already begun the upfitting process.
So do we have more cars than officers yet, because we're still bringing on the officers, right, the SRO officers? They're at training. They are, are they all trained?
Well, we're still running the hiring process now, hopefully we'll be able to get the final amount we need of the April Academy class. But as far as our cars go, right now, we're kind of, we're in the transition period of outfitting the new ones, weeding out the, the old cars that work with highway and we can't remember they need to go and then getting those new ones ready for the road and everything, so it will all shake out so that when y'all should are ready, there are cars available for them. The lead time for these radios apparently is five months, so it's going to take a little while before they actually arrive. They'll, they'll get them to us sooner if they can, but they said could be five months.
So is this in this budget, I mean, there, there's like a budget timing thing here, this, this, this is money that's in the current budget, yeah, the current, okay.
Yes, yes.
Because we approved, these are, correct me, these are the new tiles, right? Yeah, so we've proved all that stuff.
Yeah, but you know, we have the new officers in the next budget, it's just kind of, it's just, it's just timing. Yeah, they must have kind of had some plans. Well, yeah, that we talked about it, right? Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. Also, I think we, I think we used some resources, we had excess funds to do some of these, we bought the additional cars because we were, I think we were cleaning up some accounts that year, so it was, okay.
And playing some catch up with the fleet because we had, we had a couple of years of adding, so now we should be back up to speed. But, you know, just a compliment, since you've been in charge of all this fleet so far, it's, I've been here, it's a good thing, so.
Oh, appreciate that, thank you.
From a car guy.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the New Canaan Police Department to purchase three new radios from Motorola, Motorola Solutions in the amount of twelve thousand, nine hundred seventy dollars and two cents, these radios will be installed in three new police vehicles. It's unanimous. Thanks, thank you. ARPA appropriations, so that would be Anne and myself. Yeah, the schedule on the tablet, so you can go. Okay, so we, so I guess you are all aware of the ARPA funding, both of you, so you're on boards that when that money came in. So we had, we received just under six million dollars in ARPA funds and oh, after COVID, there were a number of projects that have, were received funding from this allocation and we currently have seven hundred forty seven thousand, six hundred thirty four dollars left. And the, this before us today is to sweep that money back into the general fund as opposed to spending it on anything else.
Right. And we've spent to date, we just want to turn it over to the weight. Expenses to date are three point one million dollars out of it and this will be the last piece of what needs to be committed by the end of this calendar year, December twenty fourth. So we bring it back into the general fund, the transfer, transfer.
Yeah, just, just so people realize, so during ARPA, with, with ARPA and the use of the, the proceeds, and I was kind of involved with the sub communities on that, it you were, they're very strict parameters which you use it for, and one of those was to reimburse communities who lost revenues because of ARPA, now we, as a budget, we ended up okay, but we did lose approximately three million in revenue. And I was always a fan personally of pulling it in, because once you pull it into the town, you can use it for whatever purpose. If you allocate it directly, this way you have to really align with ARPA ARPA requirements, so I think it makes all the sense in the world for us to pull this in and then just allocate it out of our general fund. And many communities pulled all their money in and replaced it and they gave them flexibility. Hey, Anne, do you know in terms of that spending of the ARPA money that we have appropriated to different groups? How much of his, did you say three million has been spent?
Three million in total has been spent.
And so the balance, yeah, the, the balance between, it's like another three million less seven hundred fifty thousand. So they're, they're, because they have to spend them, but I believe it's twenty five, twenty six, okay, so we're on track for doing all that, okay? Yep.
And most, all these are in our purview. And most, all these are in our purview versus, uh, any third parties because they were paid out. So this is all our spending to control.
Yep, yeah.
And then in, in addition, um, I put the ARPA funds um, in a money market because it's a significant amount of money. So, um, just trying to get determination from the state, what we can do to get interest.
Hmm, okay.
We're earning interest on that money right now, two points of a million, so, um.
Oh, that's interesting question.
Yeah, so the state will, will dictate to us what we need it for, so I just want to see because if it's, you know, fifty grand or whatever it is, can we just take it back in, or do I have to, or do we have to spend it on something else?
Yeah.
Just, uh, the state gives that determination, so.
It'll stay with us.
It stays.
I know, I'm a little worried, actually. It'll stay with us. Yeah, I mean, sir, we can find an appropriate use, yeah.
Yeah. Sure we're covered.
Okay.
I designated that separately from any other grant.
Right, okay. And, and this will be help in this current budget cycle, cycle. And, and it's a very appropriate use of funds. We had, we were really specific on the ARPA subcommittee about what you could use it from, from the town side. We made sure that nothing went to operating. It had to be something that was a one-time because it's, you know, wasn't something you wanted to, uh, then incur in a liability going forward, so.
And also the paperwork involved in, in making sure that all the projects are done correctly, and I mean, there's receipts that have to go through and all that stuff.
You know, believe it or not, with the state treasury department that I had to file every end of April, because we're under ten million, uh, ten million, you basically can just say, well, actually you don't have a choice. You have to click off, uh, loss of revenue.
Wow.
And then under that, I do detail it out, and I, we have all the details in the background because it gets all scanned in. Um, but, uh, on the details where they said subrecipients, it's all great. They won't even allow you to do it. That was a big stress factor in the first year filing going, how are we meant to put this in? And we all call on the treasury and we're like, you know.
Oh, yeah.
There was a reason it's grayed out, we didn't have to fill any of that. I just literally put in, if I just wanted to put in, you know, use a loss of revenues, I just put a little bit of detail to show that, yes, that here where we're going, but they don't want that level of detail for under ten million.
Okay.
The pure grant that we got for this stuff, I'm having to file a report pretty much every week for the hundred and fourteen thousand that we got. And this is just a checkbox, or.
Okay.
I guess there should get together as compared to.
So that being said, internally, we made sure we did it properly.
Oh, yeah, we did, and we had all the documents behind everything, so.
Yeah, we were really thoughtful about it, and, you know, people had different priorities how to use it, so.
And because some of these projects are still in play, you know, those, those monies are allocated, but they won't exceed what we've allocated out of our, I mean.
Exactly.
Once you get there.
Tracking it by project code, so we can't go over the budget that's been approved.
Okay, thanks. If there are no further questions, if I could get, um, a motion to approve a recommendation for the appropriation of the remaining ARPA funds in the amount of seven hundred forty-seven thousand six hundred thirty-four dollars.
Hey, uh, Tucker, I just have a question on this, because before, we had this procedure, like this selectman would recommend it, and then we had this ARPA subcommittee for different projects, which I was on, and some people aren't in government, we're on. We don't need to do that anymore, do we? Can we just go to Board of Finance?
Well, we are going to take it to Board of Finance in town.
Yeah, but not that sub.
But I sent an email to Mike Maro and to Todd yesterday, that was really the chairman's purview, wanted to have these committees read it. And I said, would they be okay with just the proof at large approving the sweep at their next meeting? I sent that yesterday, I haven't heard back. I'm hoping that.
Yeah, I, I think that's appropriate, because we're not really doing a project. We're just reimbursing ourselves, okay?
Yep, yeah. Okay, so it could get a motion.
So.
Second.
It's unanimous, thank you. All right, uh, we have a couple of appointments, uh, to fill today. Um, first is the appointment of Katie O'Neil for a three-year term ending December first, twenty twenty-six to the Parking Commission. Could I get a motion to, well, any discussion first?
I had a chance to talk to both Katie and Melanie, and man, it's so exciting to have someone who wants to join Parking, so excited about Parking. That's great.
On, on Katie, I feel a full circle because, um, my career in, in service started with her older brother Rick on Parking Commission, so I served with Rick on the Parking Commission for years before going on to council and you know, Frank, Katie's a Franco, um, so she's lived here her whole life and has intimate knowledge of parking and the way everything works in town, so. Thank you for, to her for stepping up and, and offering her time, because you know, knowing, knowing the history of, of that family and how much they've given downtown and Italian, it's, it's really neat to, uh, have another Franco involved in the, in the Parking Commission.
And, and I, I did mention to Katie about, and I'm going to speak about the Jeff Speck presentation, because that is really enlightening in terms of how to think about it. I'm just excited to see that. So I think they both sound great.
Good, okay, so if I could get a motion to approve Katie O'Neil, Steve, Amy, unanimous.
Mm-hmm.
And then if I could get a motion to approve for the Parks and Recreation Commission, the appointment of Melanie Hearn for a three-year term ending December first, twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, and Melanie has little kids, which I think is great. She wanted people from all different ages on Park and Recs.
Right.
Is there, is that the last open hour, Park and Rec?
Uh, yeah, I believe, I need to, after to, I'm.
Okay.
Uh, there've been a lot of appointments and I need to now go back and revisit and, um.
Well, to, to Amy's point earlier, uh, at, at a meeting, you know, saying how blessed we are and how the amount of talent we have, uh, in town, and how many folks have raised their hand to step up.
Yeah.
It's really, really refreshing to, uh, see this, especially younger people that have kids, really, that's what you want, and that's our future, so.
In Park and Rec, that's the fun one.
Right.
You know, you're the good guy in Park and Recs, yeah, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's, you know, as you can tell, based on the agendas that we've had, it's been a priority to get these openings filled and, you know, reach out to the community and try and get, you know, people to, to step up and get, get on these boards, so. It's, it's.
A lot of people, I said they like working, well, they like working for you too, so.
Oh, yeah, thanks. And, and I know, Dan, that one of your priorities is when you, yeah, I know you got a lot on your, like, to, to basically make sure that there's a portal for people who are interested, so we have a bench, you know, and that's great.
We just had a meeting yesterday, our Communications Committee meeting, and, uh, we were talking about the newsletter, the goal is, I don't know if I want to put the date out there.
Don't do that.
But, um, it, yeah, that is, that was part of the discussion, is having openings on that, so, um, yeah. We are moving forward. Okay, so, um, I don't know that we had a vote on Melanie, so. Could I get a motion to approve Melanie Hearn for Parks and Rec? Amy.
Second.
Steve, it's unanimous. Um, okay, and then you have on your tablets, the contracts under ten thousand dollars. Um, if you could take a look at that and just, if you have any questions? Looks good, okay. Um, so before we, uh, I asked for a motion to adjourn, I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. And if either of you have other comments you'd like to add, um, I first wanted to recognize, uh, for the Police Department Officer Chris Dewey, who was recently awarded the Stephen Wood Officer of the Year designation for, and New Canaan Police Department, so congratulations to him. Um, also wanted to give a shout out to the Beautification League in coordination with Tiger and all the work they did at the train station. Um, if you haven't been over there, uh, take a look, it really is, uh, much improved.
Beautiful, I would say.
Yeah, thank you to the Beautification League, so they are, you know, true gems for the community.
Big difference from that broken spare real fence that was everywhere.
And then also, um, uh, shout out to the New Canaanite and Mike Dinen for celebrating ten years, uh, in town, so. Congratulations to him.
Yeah, ten years is a long time. I mean, Mike, you know, and what the New Canaanite has meant to this town, uh, over that decade, it's, it's, it's been a pretty special run, and it's, um, one of the things that, that I, I thought of when I heard about him celebrating a ten year was how during COVID, he was really one of the only condoits in town that kept everybody together and kept everybody informed, so. And he played a very important role during the time, so congrats to him.
Yeah, and then finally, I just wanted to thank all the conservation and preservation groups in the library for hosting, um, Jeff Speck and his walkable New Canaan presentation. Uh, a number of us were there. It was an amazing presentation and, um, I encourage anyone who wasn't able to get there, once, I don't know when the library will have it up on its website, but, um, yeah. It, it's, it's definitely a worthwhile, uh, talk to listen to, so I encourage everybody to.
Yeah, ta- talk about fresh eyes.
Yeah.
I mean, well, A, that's what he does in to promote walkability, but, you know, those of us there were going, I never thought of that. I mean, there was a lot of, I never thought of it, and some of the changes are very inexpensive to do. Some are, you know, more long-term and visionary, but it's, uh, it, it was, it was terrific, yeah, it was terrific.
I like the fact that he really spent the time in the community. I thought he was just going to come sort of give his thirty thousand foot speech and leave, but he really walked around town. Uh, walked with Tiger and was really immersive and, and looked at different intersections and different places and really brought some good ideas, so, uh, it was, it was a very worthwhile presentation, so. Thank you to those who, who thought of bringing him here and, and, uh, getting this, this is very, very, very.
And, and he did the work beforehand, so he had done the homework before he actually got the boots on the ground, so it's, uh, so hopefully the library will have that up and it's really, everybody, everybody in town should watch it.
Yep. Anyone have any other comments, sir?
I, I have one question, Tiger, if I could ask you, we, and I know you've been swamped. I know we talked about, we just talked about capital projects and tracking them over time, um, and, you know, what level contingency we use, and I was just wondering, as we go forward, what? How, how would it work in terms of kind of getting like a, a capital update? I was kind of thinking that we approve certain capital on a budget, right? Uh, you know, to get done within a calendar year, and I was just trying to think how the best way to organize it and to give us maybe updates quarterly maybe, or something that is not burdensome, but kind of says, okay, in this budget, we expected to do these capital projects and this is a progress on these, and we're kind of within budget and within time, and I don't know if that's too much work, but just and then, you know, and I know you talked about reflecting for us how often we have to tap the contingency, and I completely understand how you need the contingency, even if you don't think you're going to use it, just so you don't get stuck, like at the last minute paying a bill. But it just in terms of, you know, we approve a lot of capital and just if we can kind of during the year going, okay, for the capital budget, we're like a thirty or through, and this is where we are, and, you know, we expect to get these projects, just some sort of quarterly update and then like share it with us, and we share it with the other boards, just so people kind of have a.
Some, some, some of that's done when Josh gives us his, um, budget update, some of it, but not like the, the projects themselves are that's kind of a separate.
Yeah, I, I don't meet every five thousand dollar project, like, you know, the big guys. But, I know you do, but, you know, just that.
Yeah, so, uh, as I mentioned previously, we have a, we have a list of every project that's come to the, to the board for approval that included contingency, uh, once it's all, usually just run pure, um. So, and then, uh, you know, the feeling is that to bring that to you, quarterly would be probably a good idea, you know, anything more than that, it gets a little bit it's, it's tough, the, the update is, it's, you know, several, it's quite, quite extensive, but then give you a quarterly update as to where we are, you know, I, I would like to do it on the ones that you approved and say, okay, this is where we are, this is what we're tracking. You know, so dived out a little bit further.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me, to Steve's point, Josh gives you the overall account look, right, you know, the overall project look, and then if there are specific projects that are even, you know, that are, that you have questions on, or you want to.
High-profile, yeah.
Yeah, kind of deeper dive, so to speak, we can certainly do that, um, you know, say Playhouse or, you know.
Yeah.
Um, we're doing, I think I have to do that for the council coming up in a couple of, uh, a couple of weeks anyways. So, yeah, I think doing that, that we can show you exactly how the projects broke out, you know, and where we are, you know, you can ask that question, is that where we are overall budget-wise, as far as, you know, that account or that project, you know, to give you, you know, as the projects roll forward.
And, and I was saying, not, not just budget-wise, but time-wise, because I remember a couple of years, we, you had like this, a crazy list of not crazy, important list of projects, and just in terms of, uh, you know, do we have the, the bandwidth, the people to get, you know, do we, to get it done, because, you know, I know, um, Andy, the, the, the rollover approvals, we have to have some projects that they've gone beyond one or two years, we have to re-approve them, you know, to, to keep them, uh, in the loop. Yeah. Right, yeah.
Yeah, I think you're talking like the tax-supported capital.
Oh, sorry, tax-supported. If every year we come and bother you on that derivative, that would go away, but.
Right.
That's one.
Yeah, and it's just, you know, because we have capital requests, right, and they're needed, we have a lot of capital, um, but just as we, as, uh, people are budgeting, it's like, okay, we have these requests, can we get them done in this timeframe? You know, it might help people thinking, oh, you know, can we push it back? And I know they always ask you this, but if it's just some sort of summary for us, I think it would be helpful, and then also in terms of reflecting, um, how often or not we have to hit the contingency and what, to what degree. So maybe as we, you know, I know we're fifteen percent, I know that makes you comfortable, you know, maybe as we drill down, maybe some projects need less, or ju- just to kind of look at it, uh, holistically.
There were certain situations, like with John's couple purchases last time, you know, whereby need a little bit for delivery charges, that nature, you know, but you don't need the full contingency.
Right.
Set amount, but, you know, that, you know, if delivery is off by a dollar, we'll, we'll come back, right, so.
And slows you, slows you in receiving it and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, and then the payment on the backside, which then doesn't make the vendor too happy either, right, so, yeah. But, yeah, there, I, I believe there's ways to look at that overall and to say, well, it's not a flat fifteen, it's a fifteen for this, it's a, you know, five hundred dollars for that, it's five thousand for this, whatever it might be, I think that there's another, I think that there could be a that a.
A little tighter.
Closer look, yeah, at that point in time, uh, and we take a look at that as well, you know, as it goes, and we take a look also, you know, bandwidth-wise as to whether or not we're going to be able to, you know, can we get this done in the timeframe, or started in the timeframe of this calendar, this fiscal year? You know, when will it start, it's, you know, but remember, most of the time, we're looking at a, we're coming to you in January, we're looking eighteen months out. But it's, you know, you know, six to eight, six to eighteen months out at that point in time, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's some art involved in here, but just kind of some summaries.
Right, we had that question with the bridge, the bridge was whether or not we're going to be able to design it, build it in one fiscal year. The thought is, yes, we need to, so we'll go do that, you know, similar to the waste point plan, exact situation with, with. Those kind of things, but we can certainly, um, I'm dialing in that list right now, updating that list now, so we could look to, you know, start it at some point in time, then, you know, every three months or so, you know, back, you know, quarterly basis, give you an update and then dial into each one. I don't know if you want to do it in a March-June kind of thing, or if you want to just do it when, you know, I figure I'd come to you within the next week or so, you know, next selectman's meeting or, or one after that, and then start there.
Yeah.
And then just run three months from that time, doesn't have to be, you know, your quarter.
Yeah, I, I think helpful, because I just know, again, being on building committees, which of course are big projects, right? But like with, uh, you know, the Turners and stuff, you know, they, they give you a, you know, a monthly update that is basically, this is where it's spent, this is what we expect us to spend, this is our timeline. Now, I'm not expecting that level of incredible detail, which on the big projects you do, but just like, okay, this is our capital, this is how we're doing, this is how we're spending, and we're going to get it done in this timeframe. I just think it'd be helpful. And you can, you can profile, what great stuff you do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, anything else?
Yeah.
We don't want to keep you too long, because you're going to have a late night tonight, Board of Finance tonight, right?
Yes.
Budget, budget kickoff?
Just, just, but just Board of it, that's all they got, the Board of it, uh, is the, the, the general government and Board of it, yeah.
There's something, there's something.
And like over you, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the small, the small part of the budget is first. We start out small.
You know what, we do good schools, that, that, that's our business, so it's good.
Yeah, alright.
The last thing, just Affordable Housing Committee, anybody that's interested, first meeting is, uh, Monday, the twelfth, seven P M, so, um. That's a big deal, getting that meeting to get kicked off, so.
Yep.
Very exciting.
It's exciting.
It's good, good group, good group, great, okay, alright, if I could get a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, Amy, it's unanimous, thank you, everyone.